Good evening and thank you for joining in. If you're watching in, this is a special meeting of Durango City Council of January 6th, 2021. The purpose for this meeting is to have a discussion about the Finance Director of the City Durango, who has entered a plea of guilty in the District Court to charges related to the embezzlement of funds from the city. A sentencing hearing has been scheduled for January 8th, 2021, and Council has expressed an interest in preparing and submitting a statement to the court at that sentencing hearing. With that purpose stated, I will take a roll call. Fay, can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bichin? Counselor Noesworthy?
Present.
Counselor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Present.
And Mayor Brooke?
Here, thank you very much. And with that, I might turn it over to our...Kim, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I wasn't certain I heard correctly when you announced what we were talking about. I just wanted to make sure it's the ex-Finance Director, because I think you just said Finance Director, so I just wanted to make sure it's clear to the public.
The former?
Former.
Very good.
And I was transposing the purpose here, so I probably left that word out, and so that is a great distinction.
I just wanted to make sure we were clear.
You're no longer on the payroll, thank you very much. Yeah, and thankfully, no longer on the payroll. And hopefully, we know that. So, we do, in fact. So with that, we can start with specific questions, but I thought maybe an overview from City Attorney would be most appropriate to start the conversation. Dirk, you're on mute. Looking really good.
I took Mitchell's advice and muted, so the sentencing hearing is set, as you know, Friday afternoon at 2:00 in District Court. I earlier today emailed out the link for the WebEx that the court uses, along with the case number. So that will be...so that's the sentencing hearing. So, you know, again, the court will be interested in hearing from anyone who wants to comment, particularly, you know, City Council on behalf of the city, which was effectively the victim of this crime. So I don't really have a whole lot to add other than that. I think that either you could choose to submit something in writing in advance, which I can file with the court electronically, or you can decide to prepare a statement. You know, any of you individually could make a statement at the hearing, or collectively, if you so desire. So I think it's up to Council to decide how you prefer to proceed with that.
Perhaps we can talk about what we think and near the end, reach a consensus on the ultimate action.
You're on mute, Dean.
Thank you. But that...thanks, Barbara. With that in mind, too, I think the issue is written or in person and collect...and then A, or Part B of that is collectively or individually. So, or both. You know, I assume we can have a collective statement as well as a...as well as an individual statement. Personally, and I'll just throw my...I think a written statement collectively organized, written statement is probably important to have written record at the court. It would be a take I would have for starters. And in that effort, we can spend some time talking about the facets of a collective letter if we're in agreement on various issues, which I'm sure you all have ideas about. So that's...I'll just start with that and then see who else has got a different opinion. Mayor Protem, would you like to take the next round? We can kind of go around and collect our thoughts and, as Barb said, come to a consensus at the end. So, Kim, are you prepared to give us some thoughts, or do you want to come back in a second? Ah, you're preparing.
Sorry, yeah, I...yeah, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Did you ask me if I had something I wanted to say?
Better than this.
Okay, thank you. I actually do. So I think, first of all, this is a very, very serious situation, and it wasn't just one time, so it's happened over numerous years and in a significant amount of money. So I would...and also, I feel like there hasn't been any attempt to apologize or say, "Hey, you know, I stepped out of line. What can I do? How do I fix this?" So I personally would err on the side of not being lenient. So I think that Ms. Brown should spend some time in jail. And I also think that it doesn't sound like she has any good plan to reimburse the city taxpayers for the money that she stole. So I'm not inclined to be forgiving at all. And, you know, personally, I look at $700,000 plus as what could we have done to create a program for workforce housing, a program for economic development. You know, there's a lot of things that we could have done to manage this. So I personally would like to be very, very firm in this situation. And Dirk, could you remind us of what the possible jail sentence is for her? You're on mute.
My understanding is that the plea agreement capped it at 12 years, but anything in the range but below that, so it'll be up to the judge.
Well, I wouldn't be very pleased with less than five at this point.
Okay, you know, that's great. Do you have a sense of whether we'd like to do it collectively, Kim, or individually, or written, or in person on that webcam on Friday?
I don't know that being there in person is more impactful than not being, but it possibly is. I don't know who would read our statement. I don't know if it's a court reporter or the judge, or who does that, or the attorney. So I don't know how that works, but whatever would be most impactful, and it seems to me that if we could agree on a joint statement, that would be more impactful. But if we can't, that's okay, too. We can each make individual statements. Dirk, do you have any idea who would be reading this statement?
I assume that one of you would. There's you representing the victim. I could read something if you want to prepare it. I have not...I haven't given that any thought. I just assumed that it would...you would reach some consensus today on who would read that, so.
And what time did you say?
I mean, it probably would be more impactful, you know, if the mayor were to read it, for instance, or one of, you know, one of the members of council, but I certainly could or Jose could read it on your behalf.
If I might interject, and I think that is...that would be definitely our in-person opportunity to do exactly that. I was thinking that when Kim asked the question, my thought was, who would read a prepared statement? If we were just to submit a written statement, would that be read into the record by the judge or nothing like that?
No, probably not. Well, first of all, I have to confess that I've...and I'm happy to say this, never really had an opportunity to be involved in a sentencing hearing like this. So I don't know that...but my guess is the answer to that is no. As I commented the other day, there've been...I checked the court record, there are half dozen or so letters that have already been submitted by third parties, effectively as character, you know, witness letters. So my guess is that those would not be read into the record. They would...they very well may be acknowledged, but probably not read in their entirety. That would be my guess, but I am guessing in that regard. So I think that, you know, I guess what I would do is my suggestion would be that we could submit it, I could file it a record, and then have one of you or someone, staff even, show, you know, appear and read that same statement aloud. I think it might have a little more impact with the judge at that point.
I would totally agree, and, Kim, I think you're right. You're right. To have most impact, any statement in written form sounds like it could get buried essentially or just made part of the record without significant impact. So we'll continue going on around and see if...what the concurrence is. So, Kim, if you're finished for the moment, we can move on to Melissa and have any thoughts regarding joint versus individual versus collective and written versus represented, and then any salient points that you'd like to express.
Thank you, Mayor. Dirk, so you're suggesting that if...am I understanding correctly then this...that we're talking about having this being read at the sentencing hearing?
Yes.
In person?
Well, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I think that that's the...I think what we're talking about is actually having someone appear on the WebEx at 2:00 and...
And what day is this again?
It's Friday afternoon at 2:00, still day after tomorrow.
2:00 PM Friday. And how long does that process typically take?
I don't know. I really don't know.
Will there be other people kind of possibly reading at this time as well?
Yes, possibly.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that the defendant will make a statement. I'm sure that her lawyer will make a statement, an argument to the court, then may point out the letters that have been submitted. My guess is, depending on how many people show up to be involved, I would be surprised if it lasted longer than an hour or so, but that would be my guess. I don't...again, I don't know. I don't...I never practiced in that arena, so I don't...I don't know.
And you'll be attending, I would...
I plan to attend, yes.
And do you have more information that you can speak to right now on what might be being expected as far as if she's planning on paying monies back and reimbursing?
I don't have any specific information, I'd be guessing, but my guess is that there will be an announcement in terms of what she's proposing to pay. Again, the order that will be entered by the court will include an order that restitution be paid without being specific as to the methodology and so forth. So I do not have any information about the plan that she's going to propose at that, you know, on Friday. I don't.
We don't know how...okay, and we won't know that until Friday?
Probably not.
At the sentencing? We won't know how much she's planning on paying back until then, correct?
That's right.
But we...I believe that I saw in future correspondence or in past correspondence that there was a thought that there was going to be an attempt for her to substantially pay back.
I think the thought is that they will be asking the court to be lenient, I assume, they being the defendant and her lawyer. And so as part of that process, the impact on the victim would be lessened if more payment could be made. So I think it's fair to say that requests for leniency would be met with greater favor by the court, you know, if she could pay more rather than less. But I don't have any details.
Um...
And I haven't been able to find any. I mean, I talked to the DA about it. They did not have any information about what the proposal is.
I appreciate that. I think that I would just suggest, I know that this is a difficult situation for all of us. I had a also complicated situation in that my daughter is very good friends with...unfortunately, not unfortunately, but it's just an unfortunate situation is the problem. But...and so there's a family connect there for us, and so I think I would...I support a message from counsel. I would like to be able to send a message from all of us as one voice if there was support for that.
Okay, well, thank you, Melissa. And Barb, let's...do you have any thoughts in those same regards? And then we can get into specifics in a moment as well.
Yeah, I do want to say to Melissa's comment, I recognize that in a small town like this, there's all kinds of personal relationships, but I also come back with, we have an obligation to recommend a sentencing. And so at some point, hearing what you would recommend as a sentencing would be helpful. I do have some thoughts, but Dirk, I'd like for you to go over the felony counts and also the period of time, please, just so we have this for the record. And then I won't make my comments.
And I just...just to respond to you, Barbara, I hear that, and I recognize my responsibility.
Yeah.
But just wanted to kind of convey, you know...
Yeah, I recognize that, and I think it's important to say, we live in a small town, and we all know each other. So I recognize.
Right, right, so.
And Barb's asked Dirk to kind of summarize the actual allegations. So what she's pled guilty to, what I'm kind of focusing on also is how we can be, you know, what we can truly influence in our statement, right? So is it a pound of flesh and a statement on behalf of the community? Is that the important part of this? Or is this to try to negotiate as a victim to receive the most benefit for the city, which is somehow acknowledging that she has pled guilty to the charges and that there are resources there, and try to set up a system or a challenge to the judge that assures the most amount of money that would be legally available to us is received? So, and it seems like in what we know today is the leniency is...if we got our money back, we would be less...the carrot is less time for more money. And if that's a theme that we pursue, then that seems to be how we would describe this as a victim. You know, that our primary responsibility to the public is to not make sure she lives... you know, not that we get a pound of flesh, but we have financial reimbursement.
And to deter any other employee from considering any such action.
Well, so the one of the way I thought about this too, Dean, but one of the things that I'm really concerned about is that her ability to pay the full $712,000 plus should not be what determines what...
Yeah.
Should not be what determines what her sentence is, because then she's buying her way out of being responsible for what she did.
What does a poor person do?
So, yes, exactly. And my understanding is that she doesn't have the full amount of money to do this, unless it comes from somewhere that we have absolutely no idea about. So she's going to have to pay as much as possible, and my understanding is that the judgment is she needs to pay it all. That's the order. Whether or not she can is the question. So I don't think there's any negotiation there. She's been ordered to pay it all. But she still should serve her time. She committed a heinous crime against the community. And it just because, even if she could pay it all, she should still have to be responsible.
May we get...just to follow the order, may we hear from Dirk, and then I'd like to say my thoughts on that, because I really don't want us to get, Dean, to your comment. I really don't want to get sidetracked into this. I think we all have thoughts that we need to get out to Kim's point as well, but I'd like to hear Dirk, for the record, state what the charges are. These are felonies. What the charges are and over what period and how many acts over what period of time?
Well, I don't necessarily have that last bit of information, but I do have...I found the email that I got from David Odmann, who is the lead prosecutor at the District Attorney's Office regarding the plea agreement. The plea agreement was entered on mid-November. She's entered a plea of guilty to theft as a Class III felony and embezzlement as a Class V felony. The terms of the agreement allow the court to sentence her anywhere from probation up to a maximum term of imprisonment of 12 years. She stipulated the restitution of $712,297.87 plus additional restitution that may be discovered for amounts coming out of the...any audit or any other discovery of other additional stolen funds. So that time period, based on the investigation and my understanding of what was discovered, was over a time period of six or seven years. I don't have an amount per year, but as I recall the details, it was actually, you know, a relatively level amount per year over that time period.
Thank you, Dirk. So my view is, this was not a one-time action. This was not a one-time act of desperation. This was repeated, I don't know if it was every month, but to get to that sum, it would have to be routinely and calculated and repeated year after year after year. And when she was questioned by people in the community about some of her practices, she was actually, you know, her superior and went and defended her. She's made no plan for restitution, for repayment of this. She's not, from what I can tell, provided how she was able to accomplish this, other than the information that we've achieved. And she's not indicated how her supervisor did not know about this. All information that, you know, I think we as a council need to know, if only to prevent this from happening again. She was a member of the Government Finance Officers Association and reportedly touted as an esteemed member, but did not have any of the guardrails, that did not have all of the guardrails or the best practices in place that you would expect. So this was knowing, intentional, and over a long period of time. I also want to recognize that this is a Class III and a Class V felony. And in these days of documented disparity in sentencing, I want to make certain that because she might be wealthy and able or whatever to repay, she's not getting a favorable sentence based on her race, her education level, gender, or economic thing. If this is a Class III felony and a Class V felony, what's the appropriate sentencing? And that's what I want to make certain the judge does. Now, if there's a plan that she's able to say to provide information, was anyone else complicit in this? Was anyone else culpable? That might be a negotiating point for at least reducing some of the sentencing. But she has not offered any of that, from what I can tell, nor has she provided a plan. So for me, I don't want to see this ever happen again in our city or any other city. And so I do believe there is...it is a crime. She's pleading guilty to a Class III and Class V felony, and I expect sentence time. And I look to the judge, but I also recognize that I'm not...I want a strict sentencing. I don't want something where you get a slap on the wrist and you're out in a few years. Now, if she wants to negotiate and provide how this was discussed, then you can look at some sentencing time and repayment.
Thank you, Barb, yeah.
And I would like...I also think, Dean, to your...the other question, I think it's very important that we put this in writing. I think that the public...it's too easy to be misconstrued as to who said what or how we said things. I think it's very important to put this in writing and ideally have it read. And I also want to recognize, I recognize, again, I want to say this, people, everyone knows people in this town, and I'm sure many people have their own situation and their relationships and their friendships. But this is a criminal act that victimized the city and also diminished trust in our government and in our leaders. And I don't...I don't take that lightly.
I think that's...those are two really good points. Let's hang on to those thoughts. Trust and trust in government, trust in our leaders is really good. I might say that I have one bit of contest to your train of thinking is that we don't know exactly what she divulged in the significant case study by the CBI and by the DA's office. And so we don't...we aren't privy to anything that she might have discussed or disclosed. And so how cooperative or not she was throughout the investigation is one thing that I don't know how comfortable...that we can make charges regarding. You were talking about, you know, she didn't divulge any other culpable people, all those kinds of things. I'm not sure that she didn't or did. I don't...we simply don't know that she was not cooperative and what the tone of those conversations, et cetera, were. So I don't think that may be necessary, but certainly the trust...
That might be a question for the City Attorney to discuss with the prosecutor as well.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Well, yeah, just sort of just to clarify something that was just said is that that hearing is for the purpose of the judge imposing a sentence. So the sentence will be imposed and will be final, of course. You know, so any influence that you would like to exert on his decision-making needs to happen during that process. So if you, you know, certainly can request him to impose those kinds of conditions. But I would just be honest with you, you know, it's going to be probably a typical sort of straight sentence when you get to the end of the day, but certainly bringing up those issues is important. But I don't think there's going to be this...there's not going to be an opportunity for negotiation at this point. So the prosecutors, the plea agreement that they've entered, set out a range that they're comfortable, and so the discretion on the sentencing and the details of the sentencing rest entirely with the judge at this point.
Right, so we're really speaking to the judge.
You are speaking to the judge, that's right.
Can you clarify for that for me, please, Dirk? So the details of the sentencing, of course, less lie with the judge, but are we, you know, do you recommend that we have a suggestion?
Yes.
To the judge in that?
Right. I think the more specific, the better, you know? I mean, you're...you as an elected body are accustomed to taking input from people where they're trying to influence a decision that you're making. Those kind of more detailed, more thought out, more complete statements are always, you know, obviously weigh on your mind, heavier than those that are vague and broad. So, yes, I see no issue with making a very pointed recommendation as to what you would like to see. So I see no problem with that. I just wanted to point out that to the extent that there's been a suggestion that there might be some negotiating going on as part of that process, that you wouldn't expect that to occur. The judge is going to hear from people on both sides of the issue, including the defendant, and then he will make a decision at that time.
So any information she would have wanted us to know, if anyone else was culpable, complicit, she should have done that prior to this date through her lawyer.
Right. Well, she would have had the opportunity to do so. I guess, you know, Amber's on the line. She was involved probably more than I was in terms of the sort of the day-to-day involvement of the CBI investigation. I can't say that she was uncooperative. As these things go, she never really contested the allegations from day one. So in terms of being cooperative, I think that she...they did their own investigation, I guess is the fair way of saying it. They didn't rely on her, you know, admissions necessarily. They, you know, they did their own checking and double-checking. They were very thorough, that's why it took so long. But I don't have any sense that the CBI would say that she was uncooperative in any way.
Thank you. I just want to clarify then that my point is, understanding now that there's nothing else...
Thank you. I, I just want to clarify then, that my point is, I, understanding now that there's nothing else to be gained from understanding if there's anyone else or was anyone else involved from this point right now at the sentencing. My item still stands that this was a repeated intentional act done on a regular basis over many years. And um, it diminished trust in government, trust in the council, trust in leadership. And um, I am not interested in uh, leniency. I'm interested in um, an, an appropriate, uh, you know, to, to Counselor Baxter's comment. I'm not a judge, but five years? I'm not the one to say, but I am not interested in a slap on the hands. And I'm not interested in the public feeling as though you can get away with something if you are wealthy, if you're educated, if you are to be, something that would be separate from any other class three and class five felony. It may not, it may not be an embezzlement case, but it may be a class three, class five felony. What would anyone else get?
Right. And, and again, just to circle back, I, I wouldn't dissuade uh, any of you if you want to state to the court that, you know, you as a counsel would uh, you know, desire some additional information about um, how this could have occurred and how can we avoid it in the future. There's certainly nothing improper about making those kind of statements. And I didn't mean, so I didn't want to dissuade you, you know, from that. But I also want you to understand that um, the judge may or, you know, probably isn't going to be in a position to necessarily order her to undergo an inter, an additional interview about that kind of information. Uh, but it doesn't mean that you can't state that those are things that concerned counsel.
Oh, months ago, I wrote an email to you and to counsel about exactly what Counselor Missworthy is discussing. The fact that is, was there anyone who knew about it? Who didn't do anything about it? Was there someone who should have known about it and didn't do anything about it? And were there policies and procedures that weren't in place that allowed this to happen? That was months ago.
And I provided, and I provided that to the DA. Again, we're not involved in the prosecution. So I did provide that information to the district attorney.
And we didn't get any response back on that. So it's, it's, I mean, we, we, so we don't know what's going on internally. It's kind of frustrating, actually.
It is, it is compounded by the fact that we're in a situation where it's difficult for, one of the things we discussed, as you recall, was trying to set up a meeting with the district attorney's office to talk to, talk to them about this for issue. So I did, again, make the district attorney's office that, you know, just to be clear, we're not, you know, we're the victim, we being the city, the city council, all of this, uh, uh, you know, all of the taxpayers. Uh, so the district attorney's office is in charge of the prosecution. You know, they were interested in hearing your concerns. Those were, again, provided. So, you know, again, the difficulty uh, of sort of a normal world is compounded by the fact that the COVID crisis is uh, making those kind of communications more difficult. But just to be clear, I did communicate that to uh, in your concerns to the district attorney's office.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And, and uh, if I might just jump in, it seems like we're talking two different things. One being the uh, investigation and our, the communication that was provided via Dirk to the DA's office to uh, make it poignant relative to investigation. You had those concerns and so one would assume that the investigation did in fact uh, address those concerns. And uh, it would be, it would have been the district attorney's uh, responsibility to file char, additional charges should there have been any uh, discovery of alleg, any other allegations, right? So, so.
And I think it's fair to say that the, the CBI did a very thorough investigation and they indeed did look for any other um, you know, obvious connections. Uh, I, I, I was not privy to all of those details, but the CBI did, I, I, I'm comfortable saying, and I think Amber can say as well, uh, they did a very thorough investigation and took their time. They didn't hurry.
And so something, something we haven't, something we haven't talked about right yet is that, and this brings this up, we're in the mid, you know, we're still in a forensic audit situation, which was caused by this whole situation. Okay, this is costing the city additional money, additional time, additional staff time. We don't yet have financial statements from 2019, partially because of this problem. We had huge budget issues last year and this year because of this problem. And we don't have a CAFR yet. So not only is it the money she's took from our community and our taxpayers in the city, but it's everything else that we've had to go through since then, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've spent because of this. So I, I, for me, I, it's not just her action, but it's also the impact of her actions. And so I, I, I'm, you know, I, shh, sorry, my dog barked. Hold on.
I, I, I think your, your thoughts are good, Ken. While you're doing that, I was going to ask, the question I was going to ask Dirk was.
So I, I think we could spend hours here talking about those. So what I'd really like to do is kind of get down to what would we like to, what position do we want to take? And if we're aligned on it, let's figure out how it gets said and who presents it.
Well, and I would want, I, I just had one question I want to get clarified and I think we'll get right to that. Is uh, just asked relative to your first question was uh, is there a, a point at which the Colorado Bureau of Investigation uh, summary or analysis or facts of the investigation are made available to us or anybody? Uh, or can we request that? To put to rest some of the, the concerns that have been expressed here.
I think that I don't, I mean, in terms of the actual documents as part of the investigation, um, those uh, as we treat our investigatory documents are typically not public until after the case is completed. So after the case is completed, it very well may be that we can get some of that information, at least a summary perhaps, from the lead investigator in terms of questions about whether uh, he was satisfied that there were no other people complicit? Is that, is that what you're asking? So.
I think so. I mean, that was, the question was asked. And during the investigation, we understood that, and it was an ongoing investigation. And that, uh, you know, they couldn't divulge uh, that kind of information to us at the time. But at some point, it seems like that is a, that should be available to us to allow us to, you know, uh, well, in fact, we've assigned our uh, forensic auditors to be able to communicate with, with the CBI to understand various aspects of that report too. So it would be helpful for our ongoing procedure to, to know that.
I'm comfortable telling you that, again, the investigator was thorough, serious. Um, and I am sure that if there was any indication of other crimes, um, even if they were crimes that, of looking the other way, that they would have followed up on that. So. But, but to that point, we can follow up on that. It's not really part of the sentencing question, but yes, we could probably follow up on that.
Well, let's do get back to sentencing then and, and the, the specific, you know, uh, items that we would want to include in that. Um, I mean, and that is a kind of a pronouncement of uh, why we feel, I mean, number one was the erosion of public trust. I had, number two might be the financial impact to the city uh, based on the repeated and uh, some of the commentary that Barb had repeated offenses and blah, blah, blah. And then uh, uh, as Kim pointed out, the ongoing expenses and the impact to the city uh, from a financial standpoint. And then uh, you know, all that wrapped into a, a suggestion that there might be a, a uh, s- suggested sentencing period that we feel comfortable, we as a.
I would like to add, Dean, that in a, in a document, in a documented disparity in income sent, in sentencing, we want this treated as it would, as any other class three and class five would be treated. This is not, this is, in other terms, this is always called white collar crime, right? And white collar crime often gets a more lenient sentencing. And we know in this country that that's happened. And why should, eh, why should you get less of a sentence for committing this three, a class three or class five felony that you acknowledge you did than any other class three or class five felony?
It's a fair statement, uh, and especially in this day and age. Uh, and I, I might ask, but not to put Dirk on the spot, but you know, is that something that the judge would uh, you know, would, would take into account and acknowledge the fact that he, uh, give him a heads up that uh, that we acknowledge that this was white collar crime and uh, you know, gender, all things aside, that we should, I think that might reinforce this well.
I, no, I think that's right. I, I don't see any harm in uh, making that request, that uh, this is a, this is not effectively a victimless crime, I think is one way of saying it. And in fact, it's had a massive impact. And um, you would ask that her should be treated like any other similarly, you know, uh, situated um, defendant for a similar class of um, offense.
Mm-hmm. But, and, and Barb noted that it was a class, you know, we all know, acknowledge you said it was a class five and a class three. And I don't know how many counts of each, but uh, we have that.
It was one, one of each, I think, is what, I mean, the original filing, the original charges, which I, I could pull up, but they were um, more, well, over that number. There were additional uh, crimes originally charged. So what I, what I told you was the crimes that she has pled guilty to.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Dean, another thing that I actually think uh, is in what we've said, but isn't being stated uh, eh, explicitly is that, and I, this may not be the right word to use for it, but we had an opportunity cost here. Because the fact that the money disappeared, we weren't able to use that money for the good of the city. So we lost the opportunity also to do impactful things that we could have done. Um, so I think that that should also be mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, you guys. I am literally taking back plates of dinner as we have this meeting, because sometimes you just have to do that. Um, but I wanted to also say that I do agree with you guys. Um, I've been a little quiet, but I, I would add in the letter that I think that the consistent intentional act um, to betray our community is significant here. I do trust the district attorney in the set, that they will, that they will um, do the right thing. And I, I think that maybe one option, instead of trying to suggest what amount of time or what we think the punishment should be, just kind of stating more generally, like Barbara was saying, uh, that we aren't asking for leniency, that we think that she should be treated fairly, like, you know, and, and, and and pay, pay, pay appropriately for the crimes that have been committed um, and felonies that she has committed. So I think that um, you know, it should be noted in that letter that, you know, really, truly, each time she stole, she stole from our community, from our people. And uh, the damage has been um, i- is, it reverberated throughout the entire community and created, as, as Counselor Baxter was saying, so many uh, opportunity costs and also the, the, the trust that has been damaged and the, the, the impact to our community was um, devastating for a very, for a much longer period than um, than just the crime itself. Um, so um, we will be suffering for that for a long time to come. And it's the people that deserve the restitution here. So I think that um, I'm, I'm supporting what's being said.
Yes, so restitution. Uh, excuse me, I also think it's important, it's the betrayal of the community. It's a betrayal of her colleagues. It's a betrayal of the people she supervised. And it's not a one-time betrayal. And we also do believe that people questioned what was going on and there was no ability back to the whistleblower to, in essence, there, there may have not, there may not have been an ability to really feel as though you could blow the whistle. So this is a, this was set up and it, there were, there were barriers placed for people doing what they felt needed to be done and, and informing people who they felt need to be done. There was no mechanism until people were removed from office for, or re, or left office for any kind of people to come forward. And that's a betrayal. You work in a situation every day and you may think your supervisor is stealing from the institution and you don't feel like you can tell anyone. Think about that.
That's an allegation that, you know, you know, that goes beyond what uh, you know, that, that, uh, we can't substantiate that occurred? I mean, there was a betrayal of, I mean, I felt betrayed as an elected official, that you're correct, totally, totally, totally. But the, the, the whole whistleblower, we don't know that anybody was uh, not coming forward to express that. I, I just don't want that to be, uh, you, you, you said it in a, in a public meeting and I, I need to disclose that that was not substantiated in the investigation.
From what we've heard from, because none of us have seen the CBI.
Correct.
None of us have seen the CBI report.
Well, I think we need to stick, I, I think we need to stick with what we know.
Yeah, exactly.
And I like, I like Melissa's point.
That's all I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah. I like Melissa's point of not, you know, s- saying what timeframe or anything like that, but that she needs to be held accountable for her crimes. And what that means is restitution and time served. What that looks like is up to the judge.
Thank you. And so.
And again, I emphasize, similar to any other class three or class five felony.
Right.
And I don't mean time served. I mean, she needs to serve time. Sorry.
Right. Got it. Let's, it's a, I, I'm, I'm happy to see smiles on our face, your faces, even though we, this is such a, one of the more impactful things we've done. But, you know, I think that's a summary statement and we end with that, with just what you've described is a, number one, uh, uh, primary interest of our, is to uh, have a compensative reimbursement, financial reimbursement uh, at the stated value and uh, that uh, fair but, but uh, uh, fair but significant uh, time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the idea of prioritizing it, so I don't think one is more important than the other. And I don't like using the word fair. Um, because that implies leniency or softness. And I, I don't, I don't stand there. I, I personally, she needs to be held accountable for her crimes and she needs to pay full restitution. And she needs to serve time.
Right.
And we are specifically.
In accordance with the crime, the two crimes that she has committed, that she, right. So in accordance with the felony three and felony five, and in accordance with however that would be applied to anyone else. So I, I personally, the word fair really bothers me.
Okay.
Cause it's like to add that we're actually not seeking leniency. I think that needs to be included in the statement. Very clear, we are not seeking any leniency.
With respect to the judgment.
Point, I'm not, I agree with not prioritizing. She owes this money. We don't have to prioritize that over anything. She owes this money. And at some point, she owes this, the community for the crimes committed.
Yes, it's not just, you know, and, and I think it is also good to point out in the letter that it, it, like, like Counselor Missworthy, you were saying, that it was to staff. It was to her colleagues and it was to the community. It was to everyone. She was representing this, all of us. And so it was, it very, very damaging. I was just thinking too, that, you know, if it is going to be read, maybe it would be good to have, you know, both the mayor and mayor pro tem i- i- in attendance. I, I have to be honest that I was a little bit concerned about going into a public setting, unless it's just, well, it's all virtual, correct? Because I was nervous about um, any public setting, of course, at this point. Um, but if it's all virtual, you know, I, I would also support mayor and mayor pro tem in this case, just to present the unified city council front, you know, and we, it's, it'll be from all of us in any case. But um, I, I think that can be impactful too, if, if there's a desire for that.
Uh, well, I would encourage that. I know, I would uh, uh, in a, to the extent that you, any of us uh, are available to be as we are now uh, in attendance, I think that would be great. I'd be glad to read it. Uh, we can uh, tag team it between Mayor Pro Tem and I in terms of uh, you know, I think it could be nicely choreographed in terms of the reading uh, to have maximum impact. And uh, uh, and be a, a worthy combination of, of uh, and, and be a worthy combination of, of myself, who was victimized over a period of time, and the new council that was, came into this situation and has to deal with it into the future. So.
I have a question, Dean. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So I think that would be, in terms of the presentation, if we can look forward to that. But so.
I have to, no, but wait, 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 because you're making some assumptions there. I have a prior commitment on Friday, and I don't know that I would be able to attend. I want, I would love to do this, Dean. I would love to share this with you, but maybe another counselor could do that. If I can't attend, I won't know until tomorrow night whether or not I'll be able to.
And sorry to suggest you, I was just going by order.
That's okay. No, 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 I appreciate that, Melissa, because I think you're right. I think obviously that's why there's a mayor and a mayor pro tem. So yes, I agree with you.
So Dean, my question is, because there are only four of us here, and Counselor Bettina is not here, will only four of us be signing this letter, and he will not be participating at all in this? Or will he be having an opportunity to review it and then sign in so that the council is unanimous in any decision or any statement that we make? What is the process given his absence?
Well, his absence is caused by the Google poll. He lost out. So his absence is not his lack of interest in this issue. So.
And I'm not stating it is. I'm just saying that he's absent. So how is his participation planned for, or, or do we just proceed as the four?
Good question. I would hope that we would come up with a draft of this sometime tomorrow that would be circulated for all our review and to have us all sign on. So it's ready for, by, and unanimous, and allow each of us to pick, pick it apart, if anything. Hopefully it's of a nature that we are in agreement and it has the right, reflects the right attitude and the right impact on court to the judge. Knowing as Dirk has described, that the, it is of limited impact at this point. There, there's, you know, certainly the plea is accepted, and it's simply the details of what, how this case moves forward in terms of the sentencing. So that's, I think this is our opportunity.
I think this could have significant impact, Dean, not insignificant impact.
I would hope that 20,000 people in the city, five people representing 20,000 people would have more impact than a friendly neighbor, that this is just okay.
Because this is a public meeting, and this is a question mostly for Dirk, or for the, for Jose, I'm assuming anything we write will be a public record, will be available in the paper. And at some level, I don't know the appropriateness of it, but may actually even appear on our website. Is that a safe assumption?
It will be public. It will be.
Be public in any form you want. And I, you know, I would assume the Herald will be all over it and without a question, public, whether it be, it rises to the level of interest that it's on our website and how that happens is.
Well, I would suggest, since Shannon is an attendee, that when we get the letter finalized, we include, copy her on it. Because she's hearing all these things. I don't think she was here at the beginning, so she hasn't heard the whole conversation. But what we end up coming up with, I think it would be good to have, you know, Tom can handle that or something, but have our actual words out there rather than what we finally decide on kind of thing out there.
Oh, absolutely. I would, I would hope that media would wait for the final product and, and understand it as it is presented in court, as opposed to any draft versions that, or any semblance of thoughts that are, come out of this meeting today.
I think that's a, I would support that also, just on the basis that it may change. You know, we, we, we all, you know, once we get a version, we all may be sending back feedback. And so it'll, it'll probably be fluid until we all sign off.
I think it'll be fluid until Friday.
Absolutely.
But I also think it's, but I also think it's very important that we have a site where people can see the unified statement, rather than, oh, I heard you said this or this. I think it's very important that there be one location, probably, you know, I looked to our media people to address that, but where this is what the city agreed to, and this is the statement. And over and over, this is the statement.
I agree with you, Barbara. And the reason why I suggested giving it to Shannon is because exactly what we're talking about. If she doesn't know that she's going to get an actual copy of it, you know, then she's going to have to report whatever she heard. So I want, I want her to know that we support her in being accurate, right?
And I think it's also appropriate that this is a sentencing, and because we have to, we do this in public, we still need the opportunity to, to Melissa's point, to really choose our words carefully and thoughtfully, but also reflect the seriousness that we take this. And so that the public knows we took this seriously. We didn't give any of our colleagues, friends, whatever, a pass. We took it with all seriousness that a class three or class five felony needs to be taken.
And also, like you guys said, you know, the appropriate thing is to give Chris the opportunity to weigh in here as well and make, it would be wonderful if we are completely united.
Yeah, if he can agree to what gets written, I would absolutely agree with that. So Dean, who is composing the draft?
That was going to be my next thought. And of course, he does the wordsmith thing and.
Should that be Dirk? So it's not a serial meeting? How do we handle this?
Well, what I was just thinking is, you know, if one of you wants to do a draft, or even maybe two of you can, you know, be a scrivener, basically, I think, I mean, I'd be happy to help, but frankly, I think this is your statement and, you know, I made notes, but if, if, if a draft gets sent out and you reply back just to the person who's in charge of doing the drafting, then we avoid that, again, reply all situation, that would, that would minimize any impact of making decisions outside of a meeting. So I think that if you want to pick one of you to do that kind of drafting, and then also gather the comments individually, so that you can create that collective statement.
I'm happy to work on such a draft, colleague.
How, how would you all feel, I was just gonna say, how would you all feel, Melissa, Barbara, and Dean, if Dean and Barbara were together on this draft?
I would be happy to do that.
For everybody?
You bet.
It does.
To that effort, you know.
You're not available to work on the writing part of it, Kim?
I have some commitments.
I have experience of working on drafts together, pulling them together. So we, right, Dean?
Well, yes, that works too. I would love to do it, but I know Barbara's expressed her interest, and I do have some commitments I'm trying to maintain that I'm being challenged by until Saturdays.
Okay, got it. That sounds good with me. I would support Barbara and Dean working together. Thank you, guys, if you would be willing to take that on.
To that end, Barb, I can, we can, we can talk a little later this evening, if that's appropriate, you know, based on the comments. I've got my list of notes here from the aggregate comments. I think if we can knock out a draft, distribute it, then to Dirk's suggestion, we would have any additional comments, anything that was omitted, or anything that's anybody's opposed to being included in, and we'll wordsmith it tomorrow afternoon, with a goal of tomorrow afternoon, sometime, having this ready. And, and maybe not, you know, tomorrow evening. I mean, the sentencing hearing is at 2:00, I believe. So that, that would, in fact, I'm not trying to buy time, but Monday, Friday morning would allow us to put the final touches on this thing and get everybody's buy-in overnight. So maybe our goal is to have this in Counselor's hands by tomorrow evening.
To help it with the scheduling, Dean, I have time this evening. I'm happy to work on a first draft.
Okay.
With the notes. And if I'm missing anything, you can add it in. But I, I also took notes, and I think I've got it. And I'm happy to send you a first draft.
Okay. And I, you know, I just had a thought about some structure, you know, in terms of boom, boom, sequence, how we, how it lays out. So, and we might want to include Dirk into it, just from a legalese standpoint, what would be most impactful to the judge? Let's put it in judge language as well, so that it, it's just not a, you know, a victim statement. It's, it's something that is enforceable, impactful, and impactful is my statement to the judge. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the judge is accustomed to hearing from, you know, victims. And again, you're trying to press upon him the impact that it's had on the city as a victim. So I would be happy to help. But I think having it come straight from you, and it sounds like it's coming from you, frankly, makes it more impactful, rather than me doing something that would be more legalese. So.
It comes from real people, representing real people. Yes. So the next question is, who presents it?
That's a really good thing to add. I love the way you just wrote that.
I'm trying to move us along, if you can tell.
Time point of view, I will, I will work.
Dean, I.
Oh, go ahead.
Let me finish. So Dean, I'm guessing that, I'm assuming from our conversation, that you're available on Friday to, as one of the presenters.
I would be, Kim. And, and you can.
And you would want to do that?
Pardon?
Okay. I would also like to do that with you. I know my internet's unstable. I'm sorry. I would like to do that with you, but I'm not certain I can. So I think we should have an alternate in case I can't make it. So how do you guys feel about that?
I think Melissa's expressed her uncomfortableness, perhaps, based on the family situation. I would like to have her in the wings if we can just show faces, but maybe that's.
A public meeting.
And so that, you know, of, you know, Chris and Barb, I think Barb would be the, the more inclusive element of our.
She was here too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it has to be somebody who is here for the discussion. I do have an obligation. I can change it, Kim. If you cannot attend, I can change my obligation to be present.
Okay, let's talk tomorrow, and we'll figure that one out then.
And what I wanted to say is, I will work on something tonight, but I think that things always are better by resting on them. And so my goal will just send something to Dirk and Dean in draft form as a work product, which is not subject to Cora obligations, as I understand it. It is a work product. So I will send that to you in a draft format tomorrow morning, and then look forward to feedback.
And Barbara, would it help you if we sent our, did you take copious enough notes? Or would it help you if we sent our, you know, you know, kind of thoughts that we expressed?
I took notes, but I always would welcome the thoughts. So it's easier, one-on-one. I'm looking to Dirk to make sure we're not biased. But I think I took pretty good notes, but I would welcome having it in writing as well to add into it.
Yeah, I would encourage that you communicate with whoever's the primary scrivener with Barbara, so that we don't have that interaction between you. Keep that to a minimum. So.
But in writing or on the phone?
If staff, we can also help facilitate that communication, because communication between council and staff is not a problem, as long as it's that one-on-one. So we'll work out a process.
Can we receive them in writing with the draft work product, so it's not subject to Cora laws?
If you want to send that out in that format, that would be fine. Yeah.
That's easier to have it in writing, so at the end, I can go back and check to make certain odd points recovered.
Yeah. And really, what I was suggesting writing was basically just to help make it a little bit easier for Barbara, you know, reiterating some of the points that we each brought up tonight. Because then you can just pull from that.
Right. And Barb, one additional task, and if we don't talk later this evening, is as we draft this, the choreography of the presentation. And so if there are two of us actually reading this document, you know, have a buildup and then a final statement, kind of, that could be the, you know, the dual presentation concept of this. I think the way I wrote down notes kind of divides it nicely into those kind of, a series of thoughts leading to a conclusion. And so we might think of how that gets presented in the formulation of the document.
And I'm actually happy for coherence.
You guys can probably talk about that another time.
Yeah. Well, I would like everyone to hear it in the sense, from a coherent point of view, I'm happy to have the mayor read it. I just think it's important to have presence of city council there, to the extent that we can. So I don't think it has to be a shared statement. It's a statement coming from as many people who will sign on to this. But I, I think it's important that the mayor's not standing alone.
I agree. And I have a question on that. If we are able to call in on the WebEx link that you shared, Dirk, will we be, our faces be on, or will we just be a phone number? What will it look like?
If you, there were two options. One would be to call in option, and the other would be the video option. So I think if you call in with video, you should be able to, it'll be similar to this.
But you have to download the app to do that.
That's right. Because the court uses WebEx.
And so downloading the app on your bit, on the computer or, or phone?
On the computer.
Okay.
Allow some time. I thought that what we, that's what we were calling in on tonight, and it, it wasn't straightforward.
Yeah, I actually, I've heard from other people that it works fairly well, but I would not wait until 10 minutes before to do that.
Good, good, good point. This is not going to be an easy thing. It's certainly not easy for me. I'm up to the task. But it is, it's hurtful, as a, as an elected official to have had this offense. And it's hurtful to have to represent the 20,000 people in our community regarding this issue. So.
I want to say thank you to all of you for all of this and contributing and being a part of it and caring so much. But I have to go. I'm sorry. I need to leave. I only had an hour allocated for this.
And I'd like to recognize, I know Amber and Devin are on this call, and I'm looking at it. And I just want to recognize the work that you both were doing back in October of 2019, and the process through this. And I don't know how it all came about, but someone felt safe enough to raise a red flag. And I think that's an important statement to make. So Devin and Amber, I appreciate it. I don't know the details. I don't know if there, if the whistleblower was not able to speak. But I, I want to recognize that someone felt safe. And I, I value that. And whoever that person was, that person has done a wonderful service to this community and deserves enormous recognition for the courage and the conviction for coming forward and sharing concerns.
Thank you. And I was gonna, before, I know Mayor Pro Tem Baxter had to leave, but I was gonna see if, in recognition that Amber's been involved with a little bit of the negotiate, not the negotiation, but certainly the observation of the process to date, if there's anything that we're missing or should be cognizant of as we draft this final document. And that goes to either, of course, Dirk has been involved with Amber, if you have any other thoughts that would help in this, in this dialogue.
Thank you for asking, Mayor Brooke, and thank you, Counselor Roswell. I appreciate that. And our, our staff appreciates it as well. I think you have the information, and Attorney Nelson has been assisting throughout the entire process. I don't think there's anything else to add. I will, like Counselor Roswell, he said it's good to sleep on it. And so I'll reflect on this overnight. And if anything comes to mind, I'll definitely reach out to the, the council and City Manager Madrigal and Dirk as well.
Thanks so much. Thank you, Amber. And Jose, you're a little bit new to this, but I don't know if you have any thoughts or advice for elected officials in our situation. But, but we're just happy to have you here. And if you do have any thoughts, you're welcome to share them. to share them.
I do not have any thoughts or in regards to any kind of advice on this, but I do appreciate the seriousness that the city council has taken with this matter. I think that it really helps in kind of setting the tone and the stage as we continue to move forward of the transparency and continuing to move that. And it is a obligation that I do take seriously moving forward to continue to build that trust with the community and moving forward. So thank you very much for the opportunity and appreciate it.
Thank you, Jose. I enjoy calling you Jose as opposed to city manager Madrigal, but
Jose is perfectly fine. Please. Thank you. And if I do, just while I have one quick second, just a quick reminder, no meeting tomorrow. We weren't able to make that happen. I'd sent some emails out. So I just want to make sure that y'all know that you have your, your couple hours in the morning, tomorrow morning free. So hope to give you that time back. So just wanted to make sure.
I think we just filled it. So that's, that's, that's good. Thanks for that opportunity. Everybody, thank you so much. I think with that, I'd like to, if there's no other party comments, I will adjourn this meeting, a special meeting of Durango City Council on the sixth day of January.